Good morning. I now call to order today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors of the University of Louisiana System. Carol, if you would please call the roll at this time.
Mr. James Carter, Dr. Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Dr. John Kandos, Mr. Edward Crawford, Ms. Lola Dunahoe.
Present.
Dr. Pamela Egan, Mr. Thomas Kitchen.
Here.
Ms. Rachel Lauderger.
Here.
Ms. Mimmy Methfin, Mr. Sean Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Al Perkins, Ms. Elizabeth Pierre.
Here.
Mr. Virgil Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Mark Romero.
Here.
Ms. Christine Russell, Mr. Joe Salter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Carol. As a courtesy, please turn off your cell phones or other electronic devices. Be reminded that anyone wishing to make a public comment on a particular agenda item must complete a public comment card and remit it to one of the staff members of the University of Louisiana System. Comments are limited to three minutes. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Salter if he would please lead us in our invitation.
Dear the Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have today to come to meet as a board. Lord, I would pray especially, Lord, for those families of folks who've been stalwart supporters of education, Governor Blanco and others, Lord, their families. We pray for them. We thank you, Lord, for the leadership that she and many others have provided over the years in terms of education. We ask dear Lord that you would help us as a board to make decisions that are in the best interest of the students that we serve and also the citizens of our state. Lord, I thank you for the many, many women who are here today and others who are back at their individual campuses. I thank you, Lord, for their dedication. I would ask, Lord, that you would guide and direct them as they see to the needs of our students in terms of their education and their other areas of their life, Lord, as they mature. I ask that you would forgive us for the ways that we've sinned against you. We thank you for your many blessings and ask for forgiveness of sin, for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Salter. Dr. Henderson would like to introduce a special guest. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get into our business of the day, I'd like to recognize a very special guest that's here with us today. This month, Governor John Bill Edwards appointed the state's new poet Laureate. He also happens to be a dear friend of mine. In fact, sixteen years ago, after he was appointed as the Secretary of Labor by Governor Captain Blanco, he asked me to be the Director of Workforce Development and started a friendship and work relationship and mentorship relationship with this gentleman. He is a very, very dear friend, Mr. John Wordersmith. John is a three-time UL System graduate, holding degrees from McNeese, the University of New Orleans, and UL Lafayette. He also is on the faculty at Southern University. I'd like to invite John to the table to greet you, talk about being Louisiana's Literary Ambassador, and also about his other work in education and workforce development. The honor of John. Is this one? This one, Arne?
I'm obviously not very good at that.
Hello? Nope? Nope? All right. Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I recognize you, you're a famous student. You're a famous professor, a respected author, a longtime journalist, and a renowned poet, man of the sport. So, this honor, making states, the whole world, and the shared excitement to take that journey with me. So, that is, as this said, the honor of most creative. I'll say that, you know, it's that magnet square I studied my love in, right?
The UNO enabled me to develop that craft in the years I spent there earning my NFA. So, I owe much to the teachers, professors at that institution. And I want to say briefly, and I'll get out of your way, but I see Jimmy and Mr. Salter up there, you know, in my years with Kathleen Blanco as Secretary of Labor. I went to the governor one day and asked if it'd be okay if I left the state of Louisiana for two weeks to go write poetry. And I really didn't think she'd say yes, but she did. And that was the beginning of a special journey for me in really developing my craft, studying poetry at Texas A&amp;M. And so, I owe much to Governor Blanco for giving me that opportunity. As Jim noted, I also teach English at Southern University, and so I share that in common with you in trying to at least build the lives of our young people through education. I also run Education's Next Horizon. I've been doing that for the last eleven years. And we provide research, we do policy advocacy work to improve public schools in Louisiana. So, I'm undertaking a joint project right now with the UL System to study work-based learning at your institution. So, really excited about that. So, Jim, thanks again for the opportunity and look forward to the work ahead with you.
I also want to recommend, highly recommend, this collection. This is for Almond's Mountain, an homage to the greatest. This is a poem by John Wordersmith about Muhammad Ali. I believe that's, it's on the back.
Yeah, that's the second fight. Very short fight.
It's an insight not just into Muhammad Ali, but certainly into the mind and the heart of John Wordersmith, who is certainly an interesting.
Move by Mr. Murphy, second by Dr. Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to offer, for your consideration, approval of the minutes of
the June 27 meeting. If I could have a motion and a second to approve our last board meeting's minutes.
So move.
Move by Ms. Dunahoe, second by Mr. Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Today, we are meeting as a committee of the whole, and everyone can vote on all items. As has been our practice, the chairs of the committees will conduct the business of each particular committee, and we'll dispense with those votes at each time. Are there any questions? May I have a motion to dispense with committee deliberations and meet as a committee of the whole? Move by Liz, second by Mr. Murphy. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Proceeding, Ms. Dunahoe, if you'll present the Academic and Student Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. We have eleven items on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee Agenda today. Ten items require action, and one is a report. Each member previously received executive summaries and associated information on these items. Dr. Janine Khan, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, will provide the report. Dr. Khan?
Yes, good morning, Ms. Dunahoe, and good morning to Chair Romero, President Henderson, and other members of the board. We do indeed have ten items for you to consider and to vote on today, and one item that is report-only, so let me walk you through each rather quickly. The first two agenda items, E-Work, since it was created in 2006, and I would like President Gallo and a few members of his staff to join me at the table to provide you with some highlights of the center, so you can understand why they should be designated as a Center of Excellence. President Gallo?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate this opportunity to give a brief presentation on our CMAS program, and certainly, I can't do it justice, so I will put it in the very able hands of our Provost, Dr. Connie Walt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We want to just take a few minutes of your time to highlight the historical achievements of Grambling State University in preparing highly competitive STEM graduates for Louisiana workforce needs as well as the workforce needs at the national level. We also want to highlight briefly some of the strategies that the faculty has implemented to enhance the student's success. So, looking at a report by a STEM Advisory Subcommittee, one of the things that this Subcommittee noted is that Louisiana cannot increase the STEM workforce without addressing African-Americans at the K through 12 level as well as in higher education. Looking at the U.S. Department of Education, they issued a report that indicated to address this growing workforce need that HBCUs play a critical role in preparing African-American and other underrepresented students in STEM. They noted this because HBCUs are 3% of colleges and universities, but HBCUs produce 27% of the baccalaureate STEM degrees that African-Americans receive. So, at Grambling State University, we have seven STEM and STEM-related degree programs. They're all at the undergraduate baccalaureate level. We have biology, chemistry, computer information systems, computer science, cybersecurity, engineering technology, and mathematics and physics. Our engineering technology and our computer science degree programs, they are accredited by the appropriate commission of ABE. Our chemistry program is certified by the American Chemical Society's Committee on Professional Training, and our computer information systems degree program is accredited by AACSB. Fall 2018 data shows that we have about 900 majors. Since 2013, we've produced 609 STEM graduates. We are recognized at the national level. If you look at the 2018 Diverse Issues in Higher Education Report, we're in the top 100 producers, specifically 18th in producing African-Americans who've earned degrees in physical sciences, 20th in producing African-Americans who've earned baccalaureate degrees in engineering technology. The National Science Foundation several years ago commissioned a report. They looked at African-Americans who earned a PhD in a STEM area for the 2002 to 2011 time period, and they wanted to know what undergraduate institution had they completed their undergraduate degree from. Looking at the top 50, 21 were HBCUs, and Grambling State University was one of those HBCUs.
So, some of the strategies that we implemented that improved our student's success was that we redesigned the introductory STEM courses. First, it started off with a focus in mathematics. The faculty included a one-hour problem session where the students were able to get problem-based learning during those sessions. They also implemented these strategies into the introductory, other introductory STEM courses. This includes introductory chemistry courses, engineering technology, general physics, and computer science. The faculty wanted to focus on how the students can learn the strategies. I'm sorry, this is my first time at the board meeting, so I'm a little nervous. And I hardly ever get nervous, so I apologize. But they, we saw some significant improvements to those redesigned courses. We incorporated a STEM learning community, and with this STEM learning community, we infused academic coaching, and this were by upper-class men STEM majors. And the students really responded to, listening to those peer mentors. We also engaged students through research, both on and off campus during the summer and during the academic year, as well as K through 12 outreach through competitions. And-
...the appropriate wraparound services. So, I think, you know, what she's talking about now is really Grambling, meeting these students, these African-American students where they are, and taking them where they have the potential to go.
So, this is just an example of one of the departments. This is computer science. Prior to implementing these strategies, you can see that the retention rate was at 24% for the first, second-year retention rate, and they only had a 30% passage rate in their introductory computer science courses. The faculty infused an incremental and intensity approach where they introduced many projects throughout the entire semester, and based off of that, you can see a significant increase in their retention rate, whereas it was at 78% after implementing those strategies. And the passage rate of both of those introductory computer science courses increased to 66% and 78%. So, we've been able to engage our students throughout the semester through competitions, and one example is the HBCU Battle of the Brains. This is an interdisciplinary approach to this competition, and we have collaborative students in the STEM area as well as in business and marketing and, I can't think of the other ones.
CIS.
CIS, so it's an interdisciplinary approach. And we take these students to this competition, and they have done extremely well. 2018, they got third place, and this past year, in 2019, they were able to get fourth place. And it was just a great way for these students to learn how to work on an interdisciplinary team and to pitch. It was with NFL this past year, and previously it was with the Home Depot Technology Center. And the Making Innovation Showcase, the students did an example of, their pitch was on a car seat and how to prevent hot car deaths. And so, they won Best Video for their efforts at that competition.
And before you advance, so in April, we participated in a Department of Defense Army Research Laboratory competition where the Grambling State University students decided to grow cellulose using bacteria. It's quite neat. And they had to build a drone. So, the parts of the drone were made from the cellulose and mixed with other materials to make composites. So, our drone actually flew. I was happy. All right? Because some of the schools, their drones did not fly at all. And so, it was an interdisciplinary team. We had students in computer science, chemistry, biology, engineering, technology, and it was really a great experience.
And to, just further add a little color to that, this is a biodegradable substance, so theoretically, if you think about the Iranians shooting down one of our military drones, had that been one of the drones that we created, it would at some point biodegrade and would not leave a negative impact on the environment. So, that's the relevance of the type of research that our students and faculty are involved in. There are real-world applications to what we're doing.
So, we've been fortunate through state funding, federal funding, to acquire state-of-the-art scientific instruments and equipment. I've given you, we've given you like four examples of laboratories, but we have many, many more. Of course, we have the cybersecurity laboratories, we have Cisco Lab. And the beauty of this equipment, because we only offer undergraduate degrees at the baccalaureate level, our students get hands-on experience in utilizing the equipment, understanding how to operate the equipment, and interpreting the data. So, now what we want to do is switch to success of our STEM graduates. And we want to start by focusing on Talia Mayo. Talia was from Colorado. She came to Grambling to be a member of the world-famed Tiger Marching Band. She chose criminal justice as a major, but she loved math. So, she enrolled in calculus. One of our more challenging mathematics professors was teaching the class, Dr. Sharma, and he noticed that this first-time freshman was leading the class. So, of course, he called her in his office and he wanted to know, "What are you majoring in?" And she said, "Criminal justice." He said, "Why? You're so good in math, why are you majoring in criminal justice?" So, of course, she changed her major to math. She told him the reason she had not chosen math is she didn't know what she could do with a math degree. So, he shared with her all of the possibilities for a math degree. She excelled at Grambling. She earned a perfect score on the mathematics portion of the GRE. She was recruited and she was accepted to every graduate school she applied to, including Harvard. She chose not to go to Harvard at my dismay, but you know, that was her choice. So, she went to the University of Texas in Austin, and she became the first African-American to complete the PhD program in their computational science, engineering, and mathematics program. She then went on to complete a postdoc at Princeton University. She is now at University of Central Florida. She is a computational mathematician, and she is modeling how hurricane and storm surges. We invite Talia back to campus often. She meets with our students, and she, during her dialogue with the students, one of the things that she leaves them with is, "You can achieve what you believe." So, hopefully, one day, you'll be here or somewhere in the audience, and Talia will be a part of the staff at Grambling State University.
So, another student that did really well was Dominique Wilson. He's from Rayville, Louisiana, and he joined the CMAS program, he said, "To meet girls." So, he came in to meet girls, and he came out as one of the top students in the program. He was a transfer student, and he became an academic coach for our program. He worked very well with the students, met with them weekly to talk about how to succeed as an overall person, not just as a student. And majority of the students that he worked with now are either in graduate school or employed somewhere. So, he was our top academic coach. He also comes back to Grambling yearly around homecoming time to meet with students in his department and other students as well, to tell them what he wished he would have known when he was a student and what they can do to excel now. And he still meets with his former mentees. This year, at the BIA Conference, the Black Engineer of the Year, STEM Conference in Washington, DC, he received a Modern Day Technology Leader Award. So, we're very proud of him and what he's doing, and he's employed in Mississippi at Hudson Ingalls Industry as an engineer.
So, before you go on, she talked about academic coaching. So, we use the model that athletics uses. So, if you know coaches, they are concerned with the complete student. And so, we were trying to address the retention of our students from the first to second year, because they would get lost in the college environment, and they would just enjoy life and the freedom on the college environment. And so, we decided to use academic coaching, and the reason Dominique was such a wonderful and effective coach is he had a story to tell. He wasn't a 4.0 student that did nothing. He was a student that struggled that first year to address adjusting to college. And because of that, he had added credibility with the students. So, now, when we go after our academic coaches, we go after those students that have a story to tell.
So, these are some of the collaborations that we have, and these are both-
So, these are both state agencies. We have federal agencies, and we also have private entities. And they are all working with Grambling State University in some aspect to advance STEM education. All right, so the goals of our center. We're in our third cycle of National Science Foundation funding, and so this funding is going to support the expansion of our center. It's always, it's still going to have a focus of student success, but we're doing other innovative projects. One is a social science research project that's a collaborative with Purdue University, and it's looking at understanding how a student identifies with being a scientist, and if they have that scientific identity, is it going to increase their persistence and completion of a STEM degree program? We're going to expand our K through 12 outreach to include mobile science demonstrations. We're going to host workshops and institutes on Grambling's campus where we are going to bring other faculty from other universities to talk about, and from industry, to talk about how do you broaden and diversify the STEM workforce. We are going to, we are developing a Big Data Sciences or Data Analytics certificate program that's going to be open to STEM and non-STEM students, and we're going to continue to equip our faculty with the skills that they need to be effective with, you know, the ever-changing generation of students.
Let me add to the outreach, and I know Dr. Khan's going to put the hook on me in just a second. As a part of our food service contract with Sedexo Magic, they are funding our collaboration with Dr. Calvin Mackey, who has STEM NOLA to create STEM Grambling. And this will give us an opportunity to provide outreach to school-aged children in the region who will come to the campus and learn hands-on about STEM. So, this is another value add to the contract we talked about at the last board meeting and how that will aid in our additional outreach to introduce more children to STEM.
So, pictured here are students that are either from Louisiana or now impacting the workforce in Louisiana. DeAndrea Moss is from Reston, Louisiana. Arlena Nunsette is from Shreve Court, Louisiana, and Anthony Cherry is now employed in Bossier City. So, we are here requesting approval for a Center of Academic Excellence, and we think we've done some amazing things, and we hope that you guys approve. That's it.
Any questions?
Go ahead. I'll go after you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the way you presented it. I get nervous sitting up here looking at you, just so you know. I do have some questions, and I'm very appreciative of the thorough packet that was prepared and so on, but I have some questions from that, and I don't know, Dr. Gallo, if it's you or others. There's a statement that says, "CMAS has an overall goal of graduating highly competitive STEM students." Do you have a definition for highly competitive? Obviously, you've got students who are doing very well, but is there an overall, you know, expectation that makes them highly competitive as compared to competitive or sort of competitive?
Right. So, when we say highly competitive, we mean that we have STEM students who can compete with graduates from any university, whether they desire to go to a professional school or in the workforce.
Okay. So, do we track that? We have metrics that show that and so on?
We do. We do. We track our students.
Good. And my other questions have to do with a table or that was prepared on the math and science baccalaureate degrees awarded, the number of completers. And there's, I need some explanation or some understanding. It seems that we have had a decrease in actual completers from 2013, 14 till 2018, 19, in two of the areas in particular, the computer science, info systems, and the engineering technology. And, you know, I'm wanting to know this only because I want to be sure that we provide the resources and get you what you need to be able to keep that up.
Dr. Clark, I think you have to look at the drastic drop in enrollment shortly after that time period. So, we, at one point around, I think it was 15, lost close to 500 students. So, as we continue to build that number back up, we were at, down to 4,500 students in the, I think it was 15.
Well, Dr. Gallo, forgive me for interrupting, but I'm looking at the enrollments that preceded, and actually, in fall of 2013, there were 203 students enrolled in Engineering Tech, and that stays pretty consistent, 216 in fall of 2018. So, there's a parallel, but you go from 35 graduates down to 18 graduates.
I think the improvement in the retention rate is what's important and what was pointed out earlier, that in order to get more completers, obviously, you've got to retain them year to year. So, I think you will begin to see those numbers increase as we've increased our retention rates. They will complete if we keep them coming back.
Sure. Well, first of all, you know, the methods that are being utilized and so on, the wraparound services, the everything that you are providing, the changes in your introduction courses and so on are certainly the right way to do it from what I've seen elsewhere, so I commend you on that. No, I was just taken by the fact that there's only 18 compared to the 35, and that's out of 203 enrolled from six years or five years ago. So, 18 out of 203, I just want to be sure, obviously, there's some that are enrolled that drop out or change majors and do that, but we need more African-American engineers, and so- And so anything we can do to try to focus on that, learn from that, help you with that is what I'm.
I think it would help also if we had more scholarship funds because many of our students really, if you look at federal financial aid, is constantly decreasing. And so that's impacting our students' ability to complete degree programs in a timely fashion because many of them go out and get jobs. So they are pursuing a STEM major and they are also working almost full-time. So that delays the, well, it expands the length of time that is needed to complete degree, you know, degree requirements. So one thing, if we had more, and I think President, if we had more scholarship funding, we can retain our students and graduate them within the four-year or five-year period because they are not trying to work and pay for being a student.
Very helpful.
Case in point on that, thanks to our university foundation and AT&amp;T, we were able to fund right at $300,000 this year in scholarships for our new cybersecurity program. I mean, the only way we can attract the top students for that program is to provide some assistance. So, you know, it takes an investment on the front end. So again, I want to thank AT&amp;T and the Grambling University Foundation for that investment to allow us to kick off our cybersecurity program with the best and brightest and I absolutely believe we do have the best and brightest.
Yeah, first of all, I'm just very, very excited to hear what is being done at the mighty Grambling University, Grambling State University. I wanted to follow up on something that Board Member Clark indicated there. So when you, and I'm just a clarification on what he was asking, relative to the matriculation of a student, you're still looking at a four-year evolution, right, before you graduate that person. So you're really looking at years before as opposed to the actual current year that we may be looking at. So if the enrollment at its beginning was lower, based upon the lower enrollment, it takes a four-year window before you actually see the differential.
Four to six.
Four to six, four to six, okay. Four to six-year differential. So does that, does that change anything about Dr. Clark's question there or not?
Well, again, I think when you look at the increase in the retention rate, that absolutely impacts the number of completers that we have. So if you look at a 30% completer rate and then that goes to 78%, there are more students who are returning who will ultimately complete the program.
But it also suggests that there are more students starting in the very beginning of the program, right? If you have a higher number in the beginning, you'll have a higher number graduating in the end. That's what I'm sort of asking.
Right, and the ability to.
Retain.
To retain.
And retain. And the other thing I wanted to comment on is Dr. Calvin Mackey. I personally know Dr. Calvin Mackey. He's a Ron Eagle McDonough 35 graduate and that's an incredible partnership to have at Grambling State. So I'm just very, very proud of what you all are doing and just very excited to hear what's going on, again, at Grambling.
And it helps our pipeline as well. So there's so many value adds to that relationship.
Mr. President and ladies, those percentages are impressive, unbelievable.
Thank you.
Real fast, too. Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we are so proud of you all. Keep up the good work.
God is good.
All the time.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move forward with the agenda. I'm not going to be quite as exciting as all of the information they had to share with you from Grambling. So congratulations on their work at the institution. We'll move forward with E3.
Janine, if I could.
I'm sorry, I did have a question on the role, scope, and mission portion. I didn't, and I'm not sure now is the time to do it because my questions are not so much for Grambling, I'm fine with everything that was there. But just in terms of general, when you come before the board to approve a mission statement, how does that fit into the role, scope, and mission responsibilities of the Board of Regents? Do we approve up to them and then they have to do it? Is that how that works?
Well, this is an interesting time, Dr. Clark, because as you probably are aware, SAC COC made some changes to their principles of accreditation that went into effect in December or January of 2018. Before, the mission statement really wasn't addressed, other than a university had to have one. And so with those changes in the reaffirmation process, which Grambling is enjoying doing right now, the mission statement has to be approved by the governing board. There has been no change to the mission statement. It falls within the master plan of the Board of Regents. We're just kind of playing catch-up to meet the needs of SAC COC. Does that make sense? But all of it is in line with the master plan and of course, moving forward with the new iteration of the master plan that'll be coming forward tomorrow, it is all in sync.
That was going to be my next question, so it is, I saw on the agenda tomorrow they're going to have a new one, so I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Is that clear enough for you?
Yeah, absolutely. No, very good.
Thank you. All right, any other questions about that? If not, Ms. Onahoe will move forward with E3. E3 is a request from McNeese State University for approval to offer a doctor of nursing practice. The DNP will allow for postmasters nurse practitioners who are licensed in another population to be prepared as psychiatric mental health nurse practitioners and also complete the DNP, which is a practice-focused terminal degree. Graduate of the proposed program will help to address the lack of behavioral health providers here in the state of Louisiana. E4 is a request from Nichols State University for approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Grambling State, which will provide a pathway for graduates in the business college at Grambling to pursue an MBA at Nichols. It basically helps streamline the process for those students. E5 is a request pertains to Southeastern Louisiana University. The university seeks approval to terminate the post-baccalaureate certificate in accounting due to lack of student interest in that PBC. Agenda item E6 is a request from the University of Louisiana at Lafayette to dissolve the EDD consortium with Southeastern Louisiana University. To give you a little history, in 2006, the consortium was created so the university could share resources and it allowed for both institutions to offer an EDD program. Both universities have grown a very strong program and is very viable. Today, UL Lafayette's EDD program enrolls 105 students and since 2006, it has graduated 96 students. In turn, Southeastern's EDD program has an enrollment of 82 students and they have completed 53 completers to date. Since both EDD programs are very active, successful, and capable of operating on their own, the two universities believe the purpose of a consortium has run its course and they would like to go ahead and disband the agreement at this time. Of course, they will continue to partner moving forward, but just not in a consortium-based agreement. Agenda item E7 and E8 pertain to the University of New Orleans. E7 is a request to offer a graduate certificate in machine learning and artificial intelligence, creation of the proposed 12 credit hour GC as in response to industry demand. And E8 is a request from the UNO to offer an undergraduate certificate in unmanned systems and management. The proposed 18-hour, 18-credit hour UC has been designed to teach students about managing unmanned aerial, land, and waterborne vehicles. Moving forward, E9 is a request for approval of System University's 2019-20 promotion and faculty rank and recommendations for tenure. In total, 127 faculty have been recommended for promotion and rank across the UL system institutions and 68 faculty have been recommended for tenure. All requests were reviewed by UL system staff and were determined to be in line with system policies. Now, moving forward, E10 is, will be a little lengthier than the normal with an agenda item, but it's a request for approval of action plans for improving student outcomes in response to the Board of Regents' report on Academic Affairs 2.18, relevant to Fall 2018 implementation. As we all know, admission and enrollment into a university is multifaceted. Not only are there minimum standards and requirements in regards to admissions of a student based on ACT or Core High School GPA, but there are also minimum requirements for placement into entry-level, college-level mathematics and English as outlined in Academic Affairs Policy 2.18. Historically, the Regents have required at a minimum that a student earn or achieve an 19 on the math ACT sub-score for placement into a college-level math and that could be college algebra, finite math, applied algebra, or contemporary math. And that student would also have to earn an 18 on the English section of the ACT for placement into your basic English, Composition 1. Those students that don't achieve those cut scores, as they're referred to, have to take a developmental course to remediate any deficiencies. And many years ago, the decision was made that developmental education courses were only to be offered by the community colleges and HBCUs. When looking at students that have to take developmental courses, it's not surprising that it's very challenging to retain and complete these students. Developmental courses prolong degree completion and add on to the tuition price tag that a student incurs. As a result, developmental ed students tend to stop out more so than those students that have no remedial needs. About five years ago, a national movement began, spearheaded by Complete College America, to address remediation through a co-requisite approach, meaning that student would be allowed to enroll in that entry-level college credit, but then receive supplemental instruction to make sure that they're successful in the course that they enrolled. With this in mind, as you see on the slide that's on your screen, the Board of Regents' relaxed placement requirements in 2016 and then again in 2017, with 2017 being a pilot. As a result, universities were allowed the ability to place students into college-level math with a math ACT sub-score as low as 16 and an English ACT sub-score as low as 15. In June 2019, the Regents staff reported on the success of the co-reck model based on student performance in the Fall 2018 semester. For analysis.
Thank you. The state, the facilities, planning, GOCEP, everyone has been working with us very, very well to accelerate every phase of this project that we can. We've been assured that they're going to get us back on track as soon as possible. This FEMA visit is critically important to get beyond and then we should be able to get some clarity on that. We've already mapped out the timeframe that we need to engage architects and designers, contractors, in fact, those have already been assigned, but we just can't release them on their scope of work until this visit is complete.
But a favorable decision from FEMA is the critical point in that timeline. Is that right?
Yes, and we should know that within a week or two here.
And the good thing is that FEMA is a reimbursement. So once they get the go-ahead, they'll be able to, and the board has already approved demolition if it gets to that point. So the board is already ahead of that process and then it would be a reimbursement once they got through that point.
Has anybody asked the FEMA representatives as to what their scheduling timeline happens to be?
Very much so. And the state, FPNC, and GOCEP are working very closely with FEMA to push this up as fast as possible.
If I could, the nature of this particular incident is much more finite and definable. So it's very, very objective what the damage was and I think when FEMA is on their campus, it'll be a much clearer decision for them than the vast, the breadth of the damage that occurred in Katrina and other hurricane-affected areas. I think this one is pretty, pretty easy to determine, even for FEMA.
The big, the big question that's being evaluated right now is whether our baseball stadium is a replace or restore. And we're pretty sure that it has to be replaced according to all of the engineer reports and all that have been submitted thus far. So FEMA's going through right now, just validating that. Actually reviewing that stadium today.
We actually have an architect and engineer on staff at Tech in the president's office who can advise us on that as well.
I was going to ask if you had any trouble finding a good engineer.
Anyway, I just, all right, thank you.
Okay, and I just wanted to sort of recap that within the capital outlay plan, we have several categories, emergency projects, those that are self-generated, continuing projects that you have approved in the past, and then we have new projects and our total excludes major repairs and deferred maintenance that Edwin informed the board that it totaled approximately 348 million. The next two slides talk, you know, just kind of talk about the average timeline from the time that the board approves it, then it goes through the capital outlay process to build it. You know, it takes about four and a half to five years to construct a new building, but we feel that the tech, that the tech athletic facility will go a lot faster because while we already have a contractor and, you know, time is of the essence. And I wanted to bring your attention to 2019, capital outlay approval dates. It starts out, by the board approving it today, then it goes to Regents, then Regents give their file approval, and then it has to be submitted to Division Administration by November 1st and then it is presented in the next legislative session. And then I wanted to share with you some pictures. I'm pleased to say that at Grambling, the Naterium, an intermural expansion is well on its way. It's approximately 60% complete. The next slide is the final rendering for the Grambling State Library and bids for construction documents have been sent to Batrude this week, so that project will be bid. And we're looking at completion date, December of 2020. Speaking of Louisiana Tech, we have the Integrated Engineering and Science Education Building. It's virtually complete. We look to finish it September 2019 to occupy October 2019. Wanted to show you a project we did at McNeese. It was a new restroom concession as part of their ADA phases. We also did a major, a major parking lot reconstruction at McNeese that'll be a big help. At Nichols, did a Pellet J Hall restroom renovation. And then also did a dead addition at Bolger Student Union, continued building at Nichols. And at Northwestern, something that was very needed, that the students wanted to have a student concert pavilion. That was completed June of 2019. And at Beacon View Hall, we had to do some heating and cooling and that project is going to complete next month. Then a couple of projects at Southeastern have been completed, but I wanted to show you the structure in case you hadn't seen it at Southeastern Science and Technology Building and also housing at 12 Oaks and Ascension. And then at University of Lafayette, it has just opened. It provides 589 beds for housing and it opens, in fact, I believe it's open now. And at University of Louisiana Monroe, they have a Bayou Point Event Center that was completed in February of 2018. We wanted to show you what it looked like. And also, the board approved the Brown Stadium. It was a major renovation to men, women's track. And at University of New Orleans, it was in much need of redesigning their academic quadrangle for the, for the, for the Earl G. Library. And finally, we were able to do some maintenance at the central plant, Schiller, at University of New Orleans, completed this month. And that completes my presentation for Facility Planning Control. And that is all, Mr. Clark.
Yes, thank you very much. All of these agenda items have been reviewed by staff and are recommended for approval. Of course, if any member has a question or wishes to discuss any of these items, please let me know. Board Member Clark?
I'm curious on this capital outlay approval. Just for clarification, this, what, first of all, commendations on the completion of all these projects, but we're not dealing with those, right, today? We're talking about the 93 projects that are being recommended?
Correct. It's strictly, right, it's strictly projects that are funded mainly by capital outlay, but some of those projects do include self-generated funds, but this is primarily wood will be approved by the legislature to receive state funding.
Sure. And within our system, these 93 projects. Sure, and within our system, these 93 projects that we're including for the 178.7 million, can you explain to me how those have been prioritized, or the input that the institutions have had?
Right, it is basically, you start out, and the Board of Regents has certain priorities, and we as a system do, one, that trying to meet enrollment demand, anything that deals with ADA, anything that deals with accreditation, and so...
So, do we have a list of these 93 projects, like 1 to 93, or do we just submit them? And how, and if we do, how do those projects get prioritized?
Well, the next step, it goes to Board of Regents, and they combine our system with the other system.
I understand that process, once it gets to Board of Regents. But I'm trying to ascertain or understand how our internal, how we get the 93 and prioritize those.
Superintendent Clark, if I could, so each campus does a comprehensive plan for their capital outlay needs, and as Bruce mentioned, there are annual capital outlay visits on each campus, where they will present those priorities to us and the rationale behind each, and its opportunities for conversations. I remember last year at Nichols State, for instance, when there was a conversation around their capital outlay plan, and some questions about some priorities led to some shifting in that plan, right, that elevated. So, the board members are invited to those meetings to engage in that conversation.
Okay, so here, exactly, and I guess that's what I'm wondering, because, I mean, on the first page, it shows, I mean, there's still four visits left, I think. So, but we're being asked to vote today without having that input from those four campuses?
No, sir, actually, the input for these campuses probably started on capital outlay projects eight years ago to put these projects on. It's the nature of the capital outlay process, as you well know, how slowly these things move through the process. In fact, I remember my first capital outlay visit with the Regents in 2005, and there were 37 pages of capital outlay projects. The first project at which I was connected was on page 13, towards the bottom of the page. The next year, came back for that same meeting, and that project had moved up to the middle of page 13, right? So, that priority hadn't changed. These meetings allow us then to massage, because sometimes things change in the context or the environment where a project may move up in priority. So, within the last 12 months, each of these campuses has had a visit and led this conversation. Hope that's helpful.
Yeah. No, no, it is, and I am appreciative. The other question I would have is this approval of number seven says, "And the institution's five-year capital outlay plans." The five years being what, five years?
Right. The way that Board of Regents do it is that we submit the system, the project for 2021, but they want to see an overall five-year approach by the campus. So, that's why it includes the system as strictly for 2021, for the next legislative session, but they always want to see what is the five years of activity.
Okay, so is this 2020 to 2025, or is this 2019 to 2024? I'm just trying to get the five years.
Correct. It is, because this is actually for the legislative process for next year, that's why it's 20 through 21 through 2024, 25.
If I could add one other thing, under Governor Edwards' administration, it's been a priority to streamline and to refocus the capital outlay process, and I think we've seen some tangible results from that. Number one, the requests are much more direct. The bill itself is much more streamlined, much leaner, if you will, and if you want tangible results, a week from Saturday, I believe, or two weeks from Saturday, we'll be in Lincoln Parish to cut the ribbon on a capital outlay-funded engineering building, at least partially capital outlay-funded engineering building at Louisiana Tech, and break ground on a capital outlay-funded library, state-of-the-art technology library at Grambling. The first, two of the primary capital outlay projects that we've had from our system as a direct result of the improvement of the capital outlay process. I'm very optimistic on it. There's still a long way to go, but I think that process has been expedited greatly.
Bruce, we have 93 projects, 178.7 million. Where's the detail for the projects that make up that number? I'm looking at this, the capital outlay schedule in our advanced materials started with next year recommendation, and it goes out five years. But where's the next year? Where's this current fiscal year's capital, a list of capital projects that we're planning to accomplish?
Okay, well, that was approved last year, because, you know, mean like, oh, you're always a year ahead. So, last year, we did 2018, 19, and that's the project year that we're working on now.
Okay, and so that was in the, in other words, if I take this schedule that's in the book and go back to last year, the 93 projects, 178 million, appear as the 2019 slash 2020 fiscal year? I'm just having a hard time, you know, if it was done a year ago, I'm just trying to figure out how in the last 12 months, we haven't had any changes to any of these proposed projects, and it's just nothing got added, nothing got deleted?
Well, I mean, some of the projects got moved up from like new to continuing, you know, if they got a lot of credit. Some of the projects have been completed, like at Tech and others. We had a project at Magnes, you know, the Health and Peace...
I hate to interrupt you, because I have an interest in time. I, for one, would like to see the current list of capital projects that we plan to either initiate project, initiate work, or to continue working on in the current fiscal year 2019, 2020. So, that would maybe give you a little better, because this is...
So, basically, you're looking for what's been funded or what projects are going to actually move forward?
I would want to know, yeah, what, as a board, as an administration, what should we expect that would come out of the ground in the current fiscal year?
So, I think what you'll see is that out of the 93, only a few will actually get funding to move forward, and so that's a small list of projects that Bruce can provide you, and is contingent upon some financing factors with the state also.
Yeah, well, I guess what my customer is seeing is what gets approved in the current year, recognizing that it may take multiple years to accomplish that, and so the expenditures are going to be spread out over several years, but at the same time, you get carryover projects that are going to impact the current year. So, what I'm customer seeing is a comprehensive schedule of capital spending that takes into consideration the previous approvals, you know, forecast what the spending should be for this year, takes into consideration the current year approval, and then just time basis spending over some period of time. I'm just, I realize that we've got a fairly complicated process that is hard to penetrate through, but I'm just trying to simplify this thing down so that I understand what is it that we, as a Canadian board, are...
Superintendent Kitchen, and if I could, so, and your question, I think, is related to small c, small o, capital outlay, the capital things that we are doing as a system that are going to impact us. I think that's the approach to take, rather than what's driven by the formal legislative capital outlay process, which is specific only to those items, only those facilities that go through the capital outlay bill. We have, in fact, the vast majority of the projects that we do on our campuses are never in the capital outlay bill, and I think it'd be great for us to have, for the board, to have a comprehensive appreciation of exactly the capital investments that we have going on on our campuses, and staff can be able to prepare that for you.
I plan on attending at least two of the four capital outlay meetings to try to get a better understanding of the process, you know, going forward.
And just to understand that how distinct that is from the totality of our capital investments and improvements on our campuses.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Okay, thank you. But I still would like with the 93 projects and $178 million that is anticipated to occur, is that ours, you want to describe it?
All right, any comments from the public? If no one requires further clarification of the agenda items, I have a motion and a second for approval of items G1, 2, and through G7. So, approve.
Second?
Second. All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The most passes. Do we have any other business at this time? If not, that concludes the business of the Facilities Planning Committee. Do we have a motion to adjourn in a second? All right, thank you. The next meeting is, the next committee is the finance, but before we do that, we'd like to call up President Gallo to introduce coaches, new coaches, to, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman and members, I just wanted to introduce our two basketball coaches. You all approved their contracts earlier. This is their first time visiting the board. They're obviously very impressed with the work of the UL system today, but I did want to introduce them and that I'm getting back on the road. Right here next to me, Coach Freddie Murray is the women's basketball coach, and just a few of his accomplishments, the 2017 SWAC Coach of the Year, 2017 Box Toro Coach of the Year, 2017 WNIT defeated Ole Miss. In 2017, they were SWAC tournament champions, and of course, he did have the distinction of coaching Dr. Henderson's favorite women's player, Chikara Hill.
Not to interrupt you, Dr. Gallo, but I believe he holds the record as coaching the most quadruple-doubles in the history of basketball at any level.
He absolutely does, and in addition to that, he has done the incredible job of leading our women's program, and we just were very thankful to have Coach Murray, and see if you had any words you'd like to share.
Good morning. I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Gallo and our Athletic Director, Rusty Ponton, as well as the UL Board for your continued support in our program. We've been able to accomplish a lot in the last three years, and with your vote of confidence, we expect to go even higher. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, our men's coach, Coach Dante Jackson. In 2017-18, he was the SWAC Coach of the Year, the Box Toro Coach of the Year, and was the Ben Job National Minority Coach of the Year. He has had back-to-back winning seasons for the first time in 20 years. They have done an incredible job of turning around our men's program, and he also has a 100% graduation rate, which I think is... And I would also add to Dr. Littow's pleasure that both of our basketball programs turn a profit, and so we're very thankful for the financial, positive financial impact that both of their programs have on the university as well. Coach Dante Jackson.
Thank you, guys. I would like to say thank you to President Gallo, Dr. Ponton, our Athletic Director, and the UL system for just supporting us and giving me the opportunity to serve Louisiana. Thank you.
Finance committee?
Okay, the finance committee will meet today as a committee of the whole. We have now seven items on the finance agenda. We have now seven items in the agenda. The first item dealing with Nichols State refunding of the 2007 bond issue has been tabled for now and be deferred for a later time. So, Edwin, will you walk us through these seven items and perhaps be prepared to answer any questions?
I sure will. Ms. Carroll, do we need to vote to table the item H1, or is that, are we okay with?
So, you're removing it, you're saying?
We're going to table until the next board meeting.
I think, yeah, we need to vote on that.
So moved. Second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is item H2, Northwestern State University requests for approval of a revised internal audit charter.
I think, Edwin, this is a request to change the charter, and want to let the committee know that internal audit charter sets forth the person's authority and responsibility of the internal audit activity. The charter at Northwestern was last revised September 2016, and it's now been modified to conform with mandatory guidance of the International Professional Practices Framework for internal auditors.
Bruce, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? May I have a motion and a second for the approval of item H2?
So moved.
Mr. Salter moved and seconded by Ms. Pierre. Is any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is item H3, Northwestern State University's request for approval of proposed new flat-rate pricing plan for enrollment in the RN to BSN program. This is an online program, and they're suggesting a flat rate of $6,750. This is competitive with the other online RN to BSN programs, and Northwestern feels like this is needed in order to be competitive and to grow the enrollment in that program. If there's any additional courses taken, there will be a rate of $225 per credit hour for those above the 30 credit hours in that program.
Question? Thank you, Edwin. There's a question from Mr. Clark.
This is an increase for the new flat rate, or is this a decrease?
This is a decrease.
Decrease.
Decrease. So, what I think you're finding is, as we had that big discussion on tuition and fees, you have in that competitive market, in particular on the online programs, and so I think you're starting to see in some of these niche targeted areas, they're bringing it back to where it's more planable and scalable in order to do that.
I have no problem with decreasing.
Any other questions? Comments from the public? May I have a motion and a second for approval of item H3?
So moved.
Rachel, it moved, and Sean Murphy seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is item H4, University of Louisiana Lafayette's request for approval to implement a per-credit-hour tuition wait for online programs. This is a similar program for their online programs. They're looking to go to a flat rate of $380 per credit hour for undergraduate students and for $480 per credit hour for graduate students, and this would be an encompassing, all-encompassing fee. One of the problems with the online programs is that there's a variable rate at every hour. Three hours is this, then four, then five, and the fees change a little bit. So, what I pay per credit hour at six hours is different than what I pay at 12 hours. So, this is set up to lock it in so that a student that's in the online program will know that I'll be charged $380 per credit hour regardless of the hours that I'm taking, and it is actually a reduction in the rate from the regular tuition.
How much of a reduction?
I believe it's $50 a credit hour. I think it's $50 a credit hour. I think it's $50 a credit hour. Actually, yeah. Maybe graduate was 100, and it looks like undergraduate was 50.
That's on an average over... If I understood you correctly, there was a differentiation between credits?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? If not, may I have a motion and a second for approval of item H4?
So moved.
It's Ms. Pierre moved and seconded by Mr. Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is item H5, University of Louisiana Monroe's Request for Approval of a Revised Internal Audit Charter.
And this one is just like the one that we did at Northwestern. We want to reflect the charter to follow the current mandatory practices. So, it's the same reasons, and the last time we revised it was August of 2017.
When I looked at the two charters, they look pretty much the same. Is it fair to say that the charters for each of the schools would be consistent across the board in all major respects?
Yes, sir. Now, some of them, we, you know, we have some new standards come out in December 2017. Some of our charters had that language, and some of them didn't. And then, at like Northwestern, we had a new internal auditor, and, you know, we couldn't find that charter. It's been approved by the Board for some time. We just wanted to bring it to your attention. But, right, all of the schools have their own charter, then we as the system have our University of Louisiana system charter that encompasses all the audit aspects.
But if you move from one school to another school, there should be a consistency with regard to the charters. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? If not, may I have a motion and a second for approval of item H5? Sean Murphy moves to approve and seconded by Mr. Salter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item H6 is the University of Louisiana Systems Request for Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2018-19 Financial and Compliance and Federal Award Programs Representation Letters.
As part of the annual audit of the systems, the legislative auditor performs procedures at a majority of our universities, and they obtain representations from those universities as well as from the system. The representations are signed by the university presidents and the system president and then the chief financial officers. We've reviewed those representations specifically for any items that may require additional attention or attention on our part, not necessarily just for the officers, and we've noted no such matters that require special attention. What we're requesting, as we have in the past, if we're requesting that the Board accept the fiscal 2018-19 Financial Compliance and also Federal Award Programs Representation Letters for Grambling State Universities, Hattie Tech University, Nickel State University, Northwestern State, Southeast Louisiana, U L L, U N O, and also for the system level, and we have those letters available for you to review at any time. This is for acceptance.
Right, and there were no exceptions to any of the representations?
There were no exceptions. There are occasionally clarified items, for example, if you're representing for a particular item and you need some additional explanatory, but no exceptions.
But I also would assume that the representation letters are identical from school to school?
The legislative auditor has one standard representation for universities that are not having full scope audits for which no financial audits issued. The system's letter's different.
Different.
Right. It includes...
And is there a materiality factor, Charles, with regard to these items that they're representing to? I mean, obviously, they can't represent to a $10 item.
Right.
So is there some level, monetary level above which that they are representing to?
There is, there is no materiality established for any item which you're representing, and some of those, some of the reasons for that are because with those items, materiality may or may not be a factor if, for example, you're dealing with fraud, because fraud has a much lower limit.
Correct.
And then some of them simply materialize and want to lie relative to say, "We're preparing our financial statements in accordance with accounting standards."
Right.
Okay. Is there, is there a reason why NEES and U L M are not included in this list?
Legislative auditors are not at those universities this year. We have several universities that, at which procedures are performed on a rotational basis, and that is determined based on materiality levels that are established by the legislative auditor. Procedures will be performed relative to those universities, but not with auditors who are, have a physical presence at those universities.
Okay. Thank you. For the Board's benefit, there was an entrance conference that Jim Anderson and I attended with the legislative auditors, probably first, second week of July, and very standard, I sent around or distributed to the Finance Committee a copy of the legislative auditor's letter that they used to guide the discussion with regard to the entrance conference. So if anybody has any questions with regard to that letter or any questions with regard to the audit, just please let me know. I'll bring it up now at this point. Any other questions or comments from the Board with regard to the representation letters? Any comments from the public? May I have a motion and a second for approval of item H6?
So moved.
Lola Donahue moved and seconded by Mr. Clark. All in favor? Any discussion? Excuse me. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is item H7, University of Louisiana Systems Request for Approval of Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Operating Budgets, including organizational charge, undergraduate mandatory attendance fees, scholarships, and system shared cost. This year, we are up in our total operating budget. We've exceeded $912 million. That is 27% state funds of $242 million and 73% self-generated funds of $669,700 million. The state share has stayed the same at 27%. Students' tuition and fees are 73%. The biggest increase for the system operating budgets are in the fees and self-generated revenues. We've gone from $640 million to $670 million. And again, the personnel services, salaries, and related benefits are 71% of the budget. We've included the summary of the operational budget here. We also have in the back the individual budgets of the institutions that have all of the details that you would probably ever need or want of an operating budget, so those are for you. If you want to take one or look at it, they're in the back room, but the summary budget, I think, shows and shares with you most everything that you're going to need in general.
And Edwin, all of the budget for the upcoming fiscal year or the current fiscal year has been prepared in accordance with all of the state regulations and policies with regard to the accounting for the financials.
That is correct, and once you approve it, it'll then go to the Board of Regents for approval, and we will start the whole process again in October, and we'll move forward into the Legislature with a new plan going forward. So it's a cycle that doesn't end. It continues on, and we move forward with that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board with regard to the operating budgets for the current fiscal year? Any comments from the public? If not, may I have a motion and a second for approval of item H7? Ms. Pierre will move and seconded by Sean Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is item H8, University of Louisiana Systems Report on Internal and External Audit Activity for the period of June 24th through August 18th.
Within your board folder, what I've done is prepared a listing by campus of all the internal audit reports that have been issued by our campus auditor since the last board meeting, also listed any audits that are currently in progress, as well as a follow-up timetable of previous reports. I do want to note that for this particular period, we did not have any external audits issued. This is their report only, and no action by the Board is necessary.
So, as I appreciate it, we don't have to take any action with regard to the internal and external audit activity?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other business that needs to be, come up before the committee? If not, Mr. Chairman, that's all of the items for Finance, and the next item is for the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchen. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Personnel Committee. There are five items on the Personnel Committee's Agenda today, which are being presented on the content Agenda. Edwin, would you present, please?
The first item is item I1, Grambling State University Request for Approval to Appoint Mr. Martin Lamell as Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer effective August 1st. McNeese State University's Request for Approval to Appoint Dr. Timothy Hall as Dean of the College of Science, Engineering, and Math, effective July 15th. Nickel State University's Request for Approval to Appoint Dr. Scott Rattamaker as the Dean of College of Education and Behavioral Sciences, effective July 1st. University of Louisiana Lafayette's Request for Approval to Appoint Dr. Geraldine McClure-Franklin as Interim Dean of the B.I. Moody III College of Business Administration, effective July 1st. And the University of Louisiana Monroe's Request for Approval to Appoint Dr. Jana Sutton as Interim Dean of the College of Health Sciences, effective July 8th.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board?
Are any of those individuals present today? And if so, can we have them introduced to us?
I will.
Oh, I...
Thank you. Any comments on the, any comments from the public? If there are no further clarifications required of all the agenda items, I will ask for a motion to approve those items. Motion and seconded that the items be approved. Are there any objections? Without objections, the items are approved. At this time, we'll invite the university presidents to please introduce any individuals present at this time.
Nickel State University did a national search for a dean of education and behavioral sciences, and we're fortunate to get someone from New Rochelle, New York, to move down here and take over the College of Education Behavioral Sciences, and he just so happened to teach both in education and psychology, so it was a real, real win for us. So I'm going to let Dr. Scott Rattamaker introduce himself now.
Absolutely. I'd just like to thank the Board, as well as the administration at Nickel State University for affording me the opportunity to serve as the dean of the College of Education Behavioral Sciences. I really look forward to working with our faculty staff and, of course, our students in the upcoming years. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm Mitch Adrian, Provost at McNeese, and we recently restructured our College of Engineering and Science and Math to the College of Science, Engineering, and Mathematics. To make that complete, we found Dr. Tim Hall to come in and be our first dean of the newly restructured college. Dr. Hall has his PhD in chemistry from Auburn, and has spent about the last 30 years hiring engineers, chemists, and so on, so he knows really what the market needs. I'll let Dr. Hall introduce himself.
Thank you. I want to thank the Board for allowing me to come today. It's going to be a real pleasure to work with you and McNeese State University. As Dr. Adrian indicated, I've had 30 years of industry experience, 22, 24 of those years in Lake Charles area, so I'm well-versed in what the needs are in that area, particularly in the engineering area, so thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Mr. President, it seems like your day today.
It's certainly an honor to be able to introduce this young man who, like me, is a native of Grambling, left a very successful corporate career to join me in August of 2016, when this Board appointed me as President of my alma mater and his alma mater as well. He earned an accounting degree from Grambling, a MBA from George Washington, and is currently pursuing a Doctor of Business Administration as well. We have, as coming in in 2016, as many of you recall, Grambling was placed on fiscal watch. We had a fiscal health score of 1.3. Under Martin Lamell's leadership in our finance area, we have increased that 100% and are currently at a 2.6. When you look at the structure of our cabinet, again, with his collaboration and with his assistance, we have streamlined the administration at the university. We have reduced the number of cabinet members from seven down to four. We have realized budget efficiencies in a number of different areas, and certainly feel like Grambling is in very good hands under his financial stewardship, and there's so many other things that he does to really enhance the student experience. He's a former student government president as well, so there's an incredible amount of alignment that he has with our student body, and I could go on and on, but certainly in the essence of time, I definitely want to thank and acknowledge Martin Lamell and introduce him to the Board.
Thank you, President Gallo, and certainly to Dr. Henderson and all the system staff who I have the great fortune of working with, and Chairman Romero and the full Board. It's an honor. My journey as President Gallo stated started as a student body president. So Rachel, you have a commitment to come back and work within the system at some point, and when I left as student body president, I had a conversation with then-system president Dr. Clausen and Governor Blanco about the state of higher ed and what the opportunities for tops graduates like myself would be afforded in this state, and I made a commitment to return to the state at some point. I did not realize it would happen this quickly, but I'm thankful for this opportunity to work with President Gallo and to benefit Grambling State University. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board, we extend the congratulations to all of you for your appointments and wish you much success in your future. Do we have any other business to come before this committee? There being them, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the business of the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I appreciate your thorough look over this process today. Dr. Henderson, if you would, please present your report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members were emailed copies of the Personnel Actions for Review. The staff has reviewed all of these Personnel Actions and recommends approval. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion and a second.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kitchen, seconded by Ms. Donahue. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
System Presidents' Report. A few weeks ago, we gathered all of the presidents here in Baton Rouge for our annual Presidents' Retreat, which they haven't said that has become the highlight of their year. During our time together, we discussed our vision for the system's future and checked in on our progress in regards to the system framework. We covered topics including finance. Spent a great deal of time talking about diversity and inclusion, had a good presentation on crisis communications, and of course, covered compete Louisiana. It's been such a productive exercise, and I truly appreciate the President's time and thoughtfulness as we work toward achieving the most educated generation in Louisiana's history. In July, under the leadership of Vice President Erica Calle, the system hosted a hazing workshop... In July, under the leadership of Vice President Erica Calle, the system hosted a hazing workshop for faculty and staff who worked closely with our student organizations. As well, due to the new hazing legislation, we've revised the systems hazing policy, and a copy of the revised policy is in your folders to review. Ms. Calle will elaborate on the workshop and policy changes, and please don't let my inability to articulate take away from her presentation. Ms. Calle?
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. As Dr. Henderson said, we held an advising workshop here called the Risk Factor in July, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the presidents for their support of the workshop. We invited advisors from our recognized student organizations to come and participate. We also invited student affairs administrators to participate as well, as they work closely with our students. So the workshop was a combination of having intimate discussions, right, about challenges that our advisors have on their campuses with different organizations. We invited an individual from Novak Tots, Josh Welch, to give us a presentation on dangerous behaviors and hazing on campuses, and we also invited Mr. Winston DeQueer to provide some information about hazing legislation from two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. We also had a panel discussion with our deans of students from our campuses during that time. And so I think that the workshop was well-received, and based on the feedback that we received through our survey, the participants appreciated the opportunity to meet and receive this information from our system. Having said that, about the hazing legislation that Mr. DeQueer provided us with information within July, we also were tasked with revising our hazing policy due to the new hazing legislation, Act three eighty-two. And a copy, as Dr. Henderson said, of that policy is in your folders, and the changes we've made, I want to say minimal changes, but the changes have been quite significant because of the new legislation. The legislators have asked us to revise the policies, to remove the fourteen-day reporting that we were allowed previously, to us reporting as soon as practicable, which basically means report almost immediately, right? So the organizations have to report to their institutions that they are affiliated with, and the institutions have to report to law enforcement almost immediately. And as well, organizations, not only do they have to report to the institutions, but they also have to report to law enforcement. And in the reporting, they are required to provide all of the information concerning the incident without any redaction, and they have to also provide specific details of the hazing incidents to law enforcement. The Board of Regents was tasked with developing forms, reporting forms, that the institutions and organizations are required to use to report. So anytime they have to report, they have to complete the form and submit it to law enforcement, and as they find out details about the incident, they also have to keep law enforcement abreast of what's going on in their investigation. There's also some, there are also some changes, well, one major change to the education component of the policy, and that is organizations, I'm sorry, institutions are required to provide parents of minors with information about hazing education. So that is something new, and our institutions are working diligently to make sure that they share this information with the parents of minors, because as you know, we have many students who are duly enrolled, so they are high school students, and so they have to get that information to the parents. And any institution that does not comply with the policy and legislation, they will be fined ten thousand dollars per incident. I'm sure that'll get them going, right? Another component of the legislation authorizes a university or college police officer to carry a concealed weapon and exercise the power of arrest when discharging their duties to alleged acts of hazing committed by members of an organization organized and operating at the university regardless of the location where the alleged acts occur. So a lot of times, our organizations may have parties or what have you off-campus, but if they are actually meeting and functioning as an organization and something happens, then campus police has a right to go and arrest and investigate, of course. So again, we have changed our policies accordingly, and we have worked extensively with our campuses to ensure that their policies include the new legislative mandates. No action is needed, and this is a report only. Thank you.
Erica, thank you very much for that report, and for board members, prior to this last summit, I just casually mentioned to Erica that we needed to do something this summer to, for professional development and to ensure that this is constantly on the forefront of the thinking of our administrators, and as usual, she did an exemplary job bringing this group together, creating a program that was meaningful, that was participatory, and we owe her that a gratitude for the culture she's helping to invest on our campuses. Erica, thank you very much for that work. Appreciate that.
Quick question. Erica, I'm listening to input from different stakeholders, but how do we communicate the content of a policy like this down to the students and other, you know, folks that might be victims or subject to the hazing?
Okay, do you mean just students on our campuses?
Yes.
Okay, so all of our campuses are required to provide hazing education. This is not an option. They are required to provide hazing education to all students. And students have to attest to the fact that they have received a hazing education from our institutions.
Students have to certify or represent that they have been given the information?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Do they have to understand, you know, what their rights, you know, their rights are or aren't against policy?
Yes, sir, and actually, one component of the hazing training includes the information about the policy and the legislation.
And is there any provision in here for reporting, you know, the policy is such that they're going to be in fractions, is there any reporting that's going to be forthcoming, you know, from enforcement of the hazing policy? Is there a report to the board, or I'm just trying to?
Yes, we receive reports from the institutions about hazing incidents as they occur.
Right, and I think the board, I would have an interest in receiving some compilations, some very much.
Yes, sir. We can compile, report, and share with the board.
Thank you, Erica. Before we go to the update on the task force and inclusion in the workplace, something that's relevant to that, I'd like President Niccolo to come and introduce Tina Johnson, a new addition to his staff. And while this position does not require board approval in the Personnel Committee, I think it's important, as this board made an unquestionable statement about its commitment to diversity and inclusion last October, Dr. Niccolo has taken a leadership role in advancing that at UNO, and I would like for him to introduce Ms. Johnson, a very exciting addition to your staff.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Yes, my team knows well that this is a priority for us on our campus, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and taking measured steps in the near future to make improvements. We're very happy to have Tina Johnson with us. Tina's coming from Middle Tennessee State, where she was Vice Provost for Diversity and Faculty Affairs. She is now our Chief Diversity Officer and Associate Provost for Faculty and Diversity Affairs. Tina?
I want to first of all thank Dr. Niccolo for giving me the opportunity to join the UNO family. I am very committed to diversity work, but in a way that's integrated into everything the university does. So Faculty Affairs is a major area, as you all know, that can propel student success, and a diverse faculty leads to a diverse student body and success. I have come to UNO after many years of Middle Tennessee State University, as well as training from the American Council of Education, HCE Program, and Harvard's Leadership and Management Institute. And for the women around here, you may know of the Institute as well, that trained women in higher education. So I am extremely pleased to be here. I understand New Orleans from a disciplinary perspective, because I had studied, my of specialization is cultural studies, diaspora in particular, so New Orleans has always been in my heart. I never knew I have an opportunity to work in New Orleans. So I'm extremely happy, and I would work diligently to ensure that UNO is the University of New Orleans. So thank you so much. As I join your family, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to be with you, and I do believe in, strongly believe in Dr. Niccolo's transformative vision, and I'm here to make sure that that becomes a reality. So thank you so much for accepting me into your fold.
Don't leave, don't leave, don't leave, don't leave, don't leave, don't leave. I just wanted, I just want to publicly state, Dr. Niccolo, how proud I am of your leadership in making this material move to hire such a qualified individual to help to lead the university in the manner by which you all have so articulated. As you know, the board has been through several channels, whether it's the Reginald Lewis Educational Equity Initiative, the inclusion initiative that we have, we have made a huge push to make qualified diversity one of the calling cards of the University of Louisiana system. I believe that this move by UNO is a material move forward in realizing a system in that will not only help to increase the local and regional profile of UNO and our system as a whole, but has global implications. So I'm very, 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 very proud of that, and just wanted to publicly thank you. And also, going back to something that Dr. Clark mentioned before, I think this is the type of material move that we're talking about, that we would want updates and reports over time to see how this is going, so we will look forward to talking to you, and hopefully all of the universities in our system, not just UNO, and some other, I think, one or two other universities may have a similar position, will take note, presidents of universities here today, take note of what's going on here, and implement a similar parallel initiative at your universities also, the ones who don't have this particular post and such a august individual here to help to lead that initiative. So I just want to, just want to thank you very much, and to stay how proud, and thank you, Dr. Niccolo, for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you, you and the board, for your support.
Thank you, President Niccolo, and, you know, at UL Lafayette, Tanisha Mallory is their Chief Development Officer, and actually won an award for having one of the most effective diversity and inclusion frameworks that exist anywhere in the country, and so want to thank Dr. Savoff for his leadership there as well, and then Michael Snowden is at McNeese State and does an extraordinary job there as well. But you're, this is, having the personnel in place to provide tangible leadership on these kinds of projects is absolutely essential, which leads, is a nice segue to the report from the update on the task force and inclusion in the workplace. In April, you received the first report of the task force and inclusion in the workplace. I'd like to invite the task force members, Michelle Caruso, Ronnie Bisco, of course, Dr. Khan, and Winston DeQueer. They never let Jean Prajean come to the actual meetings.
No, you can talk to Dr. Crane about that. Well, good afternoon. The last time I was at this table, it was morning, and now we've moved on to afternoon. There's a lot of work that has been groundwork that you all have done today, but as you all recall, the task force wanted to provide you with a little refresher and then an update on some plans that we have for the fall two thousand eighteen semester. If you recall, we were in front of you in April, that we provided our recommendations and report. Should you want it, a copy of our report is in your folder today. Should you wish to take a look at that and refresh your memory on those items. But basically, we do have our task force members here with you today. Mr. Prajean is unable to, was not unable to join us, but of course, has been participating in all conversations that we've had over time. But to remind you, the task force was created in March of two thousand eighteen by Dr. Henderson. The group was provided with this charge, that's on the screen in front of you today, basically to evaluate how the University of Louisiana system and its respective campuses could implement policies designed to encourage inclusion and respect for diversity among our students, employees, and constituents. We were charged also with recommending changes in policies and practices where necessary that would assist the system in attaining its goal of producing an education, excuse me, educational environment and workplace welcoming to all, and so not only from a workplace environment, but a learning environment.
So as a refresher, over the last year or so, we first did an environmental scan of all of the policies that were in place at that time at all of nine universities, so we asked everyone to send us their policies that, is this microphone? We asked them to send our policies that they had in place at the time, and everybody was very cooperative, it was very productive. We did receive from everyone everything that we asked for, which is very helpful. Then we, after we took a look at those, we identified key personnel on each of the campuses that could contribute to the conversation. That contribute to the conversation. So we talked to several people across the universities, some HR people, some athletic directors, some senior women administrators in athletics, and various others, provosts, et cetera, that we thought would also contribute greatly to what we were trying to assess and evaluate at that point. We also were able to talk to a professor or an athletic person at one of our universities at Northeastern that, I mean, sorry, Northwestern. Sorry about that, that was doing her dissertation on exactly what we were looking at, and so that was very helpful as well. We also had the opportunity to look at some contemporary issues that were happening right now in our system at some universities, which gave us a real-life three-sixty view of the experiences of people on our campuses that are impacted by the policies and sometimes the lack of policy or a lack of practices, and gave us some insight there to consider. We looked at all of that information, the cases, the policies, the conversations that we had, and we really dug in and evaluated those, and tried to pull them together in a way that made sense by theme, to give us a plan of attack there, a direction to go. So after we deliberated on what the implications were for the system as a whole, as well as all nine institutions, we put that together into the report that you received back in April and that you have in your packets, and then we talked about what that needed to look like, what our goals needed to look like, our objectives, so that we had something tangible to move forward with, and that brought us to presenting where we were to the presidents at their retreat this summer, and then now here with you to present where we are and where we go next with this.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Very good. So on the next slide, this is another reiteration of the four focus areas that were kind of naturally just fell out amongst all the data that was gathered. We gathered both qualitative and quantitative data, and it resulted in the four areas above. Cultural competence, as we all know, or at least the research shows, is that any type of bias or discrimination in the workplace greatly impacts it negatively, both the employees and the institutions itself. So the thought is for us to find ways to develop ideas on how we can better educate or train our employees to be more culturally competent, and that, all that is, is just being able to work effectively with those people who are the same or different from you, so that was number one. The second one is recruiting, hiring, and retaining people. It is very difficult in our state, if you would, we compete with the same number of people. It is hard for some of our institutions because our geographical location within the state, it's competitive. People don't necessarily want to go to a rural area, nor do they want to live in a very large city. Also, competing with the rest of the United States, people don't look favorably sometimes upon Louisiana in terms of academics. So therefore, we all thought that we could share pools of applicants, that we could share ideas, train our search committees to be more diversified, to look for people who are, I like the term that Vice Chair Carter used, qualified diversity, not just having diversity for the sake of its own sake, but truly qualified people that do exist out there. So a lot of revision was done to policy and procedure, it included language just in and of itself, it included a commitment to real action, not just saying, oh, this is a good idea, this might be something we could do. It's called commitment. The third area is professional development and leadership training. Again, we need to be all in in this training, not just Again, we need to be all in, in this training, not just to mark the box, which is what we do a lot of times in whatever type of training we do. We must be committed and it all should be, should be part of a planning and evaluation process, to look back at ourselves and say, did we reach these goals that we set ourselves, set for ourselves? And finally athletics, I see that as a microcosm of everything else that goes on in our institutions, but it seems to make itself at the front door because everybody is about athletics, especially in Louisiana. What a great thing. But we still continue to see despite 40 years plus of Title IX, we still have fewer people who identify as females not have head coaching jobs in especially female sports or upper level administration. We are still running far behind in that. So therefore, we need to see how we can go against the grain and become inclusive across the board.
Okay, so moving on, this is where you guys come in, the ongoing commitment and oversight. In April, we asked you guys to endorse us and support us as we move forward and you gave us an overwhelming endorsement. So there are a few factors you got to consider in ensuring the success of this work. First is a board. You have to support the communication, our initiatives and our recommendations and we've, we've gotten overwhelming support from the board and the presidents. Number two is going to be defining and monitoring accountability. It's interesting we have presidential evaluations today because at some point in the future, we would like these components to be part of every executive's evaluation. This shouldn't just be a task force initiative. When we evaluate our executives, this should be a component of their success. What we're doing now is developing metrics to measure success. As you see in the next slide, we've been collecting data and collecting data and collecting data to determine what should we be looking at. And then the last one is reviewing and adjusting the initial evaluation and recommendations. And that's literally the goalpost. As we collect data and as we try to implement some accountability measures, we will occasionally move the goalposts. There are some things we think should be the target and as you get into it, you discover, ah, the target should be shifted to the left a little bit. So it's not a static target, it will be a moving target over time.
So as a task force, and we worked on a report, presented it to you, we met with the presidents at their retreat a few weeks ago to have these conversations about our ideas because we can't do this in isolation. This is something that we want to provide vision for our campuses and they have to create the way in which they're going to forge forward that's best to their role scope and mission of their institution and the, the community and region that they serve. So what we're going to present over the next, the course of the next few slides are, are implementation plans that we have for the next few months. Where do we go from the report to the future and how we start to really craft a message and putting where the, actually the pen goes to paper and the work actually begins. Two things that we've already done, just as Winston, Winston mentioned, the evaluation of our leadership. As you all know, when you'll meet with two presidents shortly after we finish our report, we have made adjustments to the evaluation process for our presidents. There are initial changes, which we will modify over time, but if you look at June 2019, the first bullet on the slide, as you all are aware, we do distribute an anonymous survey to key personnel on the various campuses to provide, to gather input and insight for those that work for the president and how that person is doing. We did include an item this year through the evaluation process that is bolded in the different color above, asking for input on how that leader facilitates inclusive excellence practices that result in individuals being valued, respected and treated with dignity. And so we've collected that information. You'll receive hard copies when you all meet to go over the evaluations later this afternoon. In addition, each campus president was asked to provide a self-assessment, as they have been in the past, and we did make that modification to ask that individual to identify ways in which he plans to create a culture of inclusive excellence for faculty, staff and students on his campus. And so you'll learn about that again when you look at the self-assessments that have been provided by the nine university presidents.
And the third thing, just August of this year, as I mentioned earlier, there are revisions to the policy and procedural manual, sorry, start over, policy and procedural manual regarding search committees. And this would be for positions of dean or higher. That's where we seem to have done a little evaluation. We don't have a lot, a lot of diversity at those levels. So for your convenience, it has been included in your package. The changes are highlighted in yellow. Please look at those. And this did go into effect July 1. But what this is really saying is what I said earlier, it's more than a good idea or a good thought. It is really truly mandatory. It is a policy now, you must do it. It will be looked at and if you don't abide by it, I guess there's some type of consequence that you would have to, maybe Dr. Henderson, I don't know, I'm not sure. But anyway, so instead of saying, oh, let's think about having a diverse committee, we will have a search committee that is representative of your university's demographics. Human resources will play an important role from the beginning of the process to the end of it. They will be able to look at job descriptions that we post, job postings, and look at them to make sure that they're not excluding anybody, that they're making sure that they're written to where people feel like they want to be part of that institution. They're included, you're going to have more productivity. And you will also look at a diverse pool. A diverse pool will happen. We're going to look at bigger pools, not limit them to just the two or three that have been standard. We're going to allow an opportunity for people who have the credentials to have an interview because I think right now at the University of Houston, there might be a person who didn't even have an opportunity to reply, apply to the head football coaching position and he's suing right now. So at least give qualified people an opportunity. That's what these revisions are about.
So as we move forward in September, a couple of quick things. One, we're continuing to collect data, data on how we hire, data on why people leave, data on how we search. And one of the things that's interesting from attending board meetings is I think collecting the data has started to change, as you can see in our personnel actions. You know, folks are paying more attention to how they recruit just by asking where's the data. The second thing is we're going to have a major wide convening in October. We used to call those conferences or meetings, but now they call them convenings. And note the language, it's on inclusive excellence. When I tell you about the goalpost moving, one of the things we've noted is, is something as simple as being a parent is often difficult in certain types of positions, especially athletic departments. And so in focusing on inclusive excellence, we're not simply talking about race or gender. We could talk about being a parent, you know, English not being your first language. There are a lot of things that will come out of this conference aside from just race and gender. And then finally, in October, we hope to have some oversight committees, basically folks on the ground at the campuses that monitor the data and provide real-time feedback.
So in addition to what we're doing from down, trickle down from the board, trickle down from this task force, we want people to feel like they have some real resources, some solid, robust resources they can rely on. So we've identified a couple as examples of what we'll be sharing with key individuals on every campus. One being the primer from AAC and U, which was the compilation of three papers that they sanctioned that focus on inclusive excellence and give universities the opportunity to have a scorecard of sorts for themselves, to do self-assessments and identify and be honest with themselves about how they're doing in these areas of inclusion and equity and such. And the ACE paper, which focuses on how to lead with diversity-themed intentional changes on your campuses, very intentional decision-making that leads to inclusion and equity on our campuses and on our system as a whole. So papers like that, that we identify and that others share with us, we will make sure get into the hands of key individuals on campus so they feel again, like they have those robust, robust resources to support what they're doing.
Also in October, we plan to start building a system-wide repository that would include content experts in diversity and inclusion and also human capital from which campuses can draw. So many times, you know, the, the dollar sign gets in the way for our system. So we know there are experts on every campus that have information, that know about diversity, that know about inclusion, that know about leadership. We need to utilize those resources because if we start depending upon one another, it not only makes our system stronger, but it makes us have more of a presence in the state and in the United States as well. Not only do we need to look at the content experts, but the human capital. Sometimes you've got a person who always seems to be that second one in charge behind a supervisor or a director. They're just not ready, maybe they don't have the years of experience, but that supervisor right ahead of them is just kind of at the start of their career. They kind of have to be in line. They're waiting for their turn. So we're kind of trying to turn the table a little bit. Would it be beyond the ability to think outside the box and actually have systems, schools within the system, share talent as well? And that's what we're going with that. It would be an electronic system, of course, developed with people's content areas, the expertise they have, what makes them that expert, resumes, that way people could search for that. And then they would also have availability dates for a semester to come do presentations. So those are kind of unique ideas. It's going to take everyone to get on board, but I think it's worth it because again, we are stronger as a system if the nine universities in it work together.
And we're very fortunate that this year's multicultural institute hosted by NASPA will be in New Orleans, so right here in our state driving distance for everyone for a little travel expense. And that conference will give everyone a chance who attends to look at their own awareness, increase their own self-awareness about how they live in the world with diversity, inclusion and equity. It will also give people a chance to develop out their own multicultural educational skills as well as share best practices with people internationally who will attend this conference. So our goal is at minimum to have the members of the oversight committees at each institution that Winston referenced earlier, to attend this in addition to other key personnel from each university and the system as well.
And so if you have picked up on themes about next steps, we're working toward creating a culture or increasing everyone's education in regards to diversity, equity and inclusion, building on the power of our nine institutions to bring them together, that they're going to be challenged with their own efforts on their own campuses, but then from a system perspective, we can bring our talent together to talk from a, a bigger perspective on how we can work together and help each other move toward communities of academic and excellence in addition to inclusive excellence. And then also to help provide guidance and then to also lay out what the expectations are. It's just very similar to the strategic framework that the nine university presidents created. It's a framework, it's to help guide the campuses, the beacon of light, and this is what we're doing with the work that we, we plan to implement over the next, the course of the next few months and the work that we've already accomplished to date. It's important to coordinate those conversations, to put the goals that, that, the goal that Winston mentioned of, of this constantly moving and to push our campuses forward to really achieving the greatest thing that they can do to ensure that there is a diverse population among their faculty, staff and students and that the environment is welcoming to all so everyone can be successful. And that concludes the update that we have for you today unless my colleagues have anything else to add. Any questions or comments?
I have both question and comment. Comment first of all, thank you, Mr. President, for bringing this forward. I think, I think keeping us abreast of, of what's happened is extremely important. To that end, there were a number of times within the, the presentation where you talked about identification of metrics. I think it was Winston on your slide for the board to, to have some knowledge of that. You, you suggested the disaggregation of data, monitoring of the data, talked about institutional scorecards, all of which I 100% recommend and commend you with. I'm, I'm trying to understand or ascertain though, you know, the, the role that we will play in terms of hearing it, you know, how often will this be reported? Will there be public facing of this, this documentation? Will we have an idea of, of, you know, progress that is actually being made? Are we going to set goals? Are there going to be some, some expectations or is it all an internal process?
And I'll start with the answer. Our internal discussion is not to set goals. What we were trying to do is aggregate the data and for example, if you take an athletics department, you know, compare the diversity of the student body there with the diversity of the student population as a, as a whole and the diversity of the administration in an athletics department and the diversity of a university administration and simply show it to the university administration and let them decide, is there something you should do with this? Do you think there's areas that need to be changed? Have you talked to the students? It's, it's one of those things we went round and round about. We think pulling the right data and looking at the right data will make itself apparent where our institutions could improve. And, and it may not necessarily be along lines we traditionally think about, race and gender. It could be like one of the most important interviews we had was a young woman in an athletics department explaining what it's like to be an athletics department administrator when you're responsible for small kids. That's a paradigm we don't normally think about, but in the athletics world, very few administrators have small kids, mostly men, and mostly men who aren't the primary caretaker of their kids. And you know, if you want to diversify athletics, especially on the gender front, you got to start thinking about things like childcare. How much time do female administrators really have to work? So the data is really right now, almost in, in and of itself.
I'll say this as well, as you make this cultural change throughout this enterprise, you start to see interventions that occur at the campus and one in particular is at McNeese State. They purposely put in an intervention, the ground program being one, where they have closed the equity gap between male students and non-male students, between young men of color and the students, student population. They've closed the equity gap of the intervention. Those are the measures that are going to actually tell us that we're doing the right job. It's kind of blown from having this cultural approach that goes by the board and will have these kinds of courses to share with you, such as measure of actual progress. To me, it's about student outcomes, it's about advancement of our personnel and all of these, these measures that are going to be developed in October.
And if I may, Dr. Clark, you know, the goal is to keep the board informed. I think there are, I know there are, just, just as Dr. Henderson mentioned, great initiatives. Well, you might not know what those initiatives are. And so for us to maybe do a one-pager every board meeting, if you wanted more information, we're happy to do that. But to collect that information that hasn't been collected from a system perspective and sharing it with the board will be a change in and of itself and a very positive change. But also that data, when you look at the fact book, yeah, you see breakdown by gender, you see breakdown by race, but then there's so much, we're data-rich, so we need to drill down even more to understand what do our campuses look like now and as this change happens, how, how is that population changing? So we do want to continue to share everything that's going on from the campus so you're knowledgeable and also to the, the folks in the audience. I mean, we need to beg, borrow and steal from each other to lift each other up. And so if there's something that's great being done at Northwestern that might fit in at Nichols or some elements of it, we need to do a better job with sharing all of those, our talent. We have a lot of talent and so there's the recommendation for a repository of that talent that people, that campuses can borrow from if they need individuals to come speak at symposiums or whatnot. But we will continue to update you with things that can be highlighted, data that needs to be understood and whatever other bits of information that might be helpful to you as a board member.
And in spirit, we've been the leading system, I think, in getting transparent on a number of things. As we develop these measures, they'll be right on our transparency page, which is totally accessible by ID bodies. You can measure whether we want to work or not.
I just, you know, I'm all for metrics, but we have to make sure we're measuring, you know, the right outcomes. And, and sometimes, you know, what I've seen over the years is that if we get too focused on metrics, we really lose sight of, you know, some hard work that, that people are doing in a qualitative, you know, in that sense. So, you know, I just hope that whatever metrics are developed, that there are some qualitative metrics because quite frankly, there could be some lead time, you know, for the universities to get up to speed where we'd like to see them, but you know, we need to understand, you know, what, what efforts they're going through, what are the qualitative measures that, you know, we can make in, you know, in terms of assessing their progress to comply with, with, with the policy. And the second thing, I, you know, I think the policy is great. I, you know, sometimes when you, and I don't understand the details of how it was developed. I know there was input from the universities to, you know, from the board down to the universities. I just need to make sure that everybody's on the same page and everybody is buying in to, to this, even to the point where you mentioned oversight teams. I don't know how these oversight teams are going to be selected, how many they're going to be since you've got several steps in the diversity. Are they going to be multiple, is it going to be one? I think to the extent that we can, we ought to rely on the judgment and experience of our and experience of our university presidents to recommend how are they going to implement this policy? And it, because it may be a little different from one school to the other. So I would hope that the board's role at this point is more one of oversight, to assess compliance, but in terms of actual implementation and execution of the policy, that we rely on the folks that have the day-to-day responsibilities of managing the universities that we oversee.
I could not agree with you more, Mr. Kitchen.
Now, also, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Did I hear you say that this would be part of the evaluation of the presidents going forward?
Yes, ma'am, and actually, it was already implemented, two minor changes, or actually just bringing the issue of equity, diversity, and inclusion into the evaluation process. And that happened in June. And so you'll be seeing those self-evaluations and the results from the surveys with those additions when you all meet to go over evaluations shortly. And we'll continue to tweak that. This is an ever-evolving process. And so, you know, input from you all, because you're the ones that evaluate and whatever information you want collected in that regard, we'll work to include that through the self-assessment process and the evaluation process.
I just wanna, I wanna thank Dr. Henderson and thank you all for the great work as a great start to a process that we are undertaking. I think that one of the things you're hearing from the board members is that, you know, we see this as like what we consider to be the civil rights method. I've been taught that the civil rights method had three prongs to it. First is the investigation, right? So collecting of this data is sort of an investigatory work, trying to find out the landscape of what's going on so we can be intelligent about the next step, and that is to educate, right? So you're educating us on the data that's collected. So that's part two of the civil rights method. But the last part of the civil rights method is to demonstrate, right? So we're looking for a demonstration going forward. So you investigate, you educate, and then you demonstrate. So I think that as part of the move forward, we're looking for this wonderful information on the front end, and we're looking to be educated on it. And certainly, we're looking for the demonstration as done by what we saw today with UNO, right? And all the other institutions of action, right, some action. And other institutions, as Dr. Henderson so articulated, there are other universities that also have this component already in place, so I applaud them also. But that demonstration of a qualitative matrix, as my board member so articulately suggested, is very important. But I'm very proud and grateful that we've made this quantum leap in terms of what's been done from this perspective at this particular point in time. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you all also.
You're welcome.
Should I go ahead? So in keeping with that, I'd like to offer a proposed language war, a resolution on your presentation, and that is, I would like to offer a resolution applauding the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force with its considerable work to date, endorse the proposed policy enhancement related to search committees, and implore the continued work to ensure we realize tangible progress throughout our system and on each of our campuses. So that's a resolution, a verbal resolution I would like the board to take under consideration.
We have a resolution offered and motion by Mr. Clark, second by Dr. Clark. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, I think this is working. Thank you. Now, I get to give you an update on Compete Louisiana. More than 1,100 students, including more than 500 applications, have already been filed with our campuses. Our coaches are working with more than 400 stopouts from member institutions. To say that this program has started off with minimal outreach and done extraordinary work already is an understatement. Now, we've already started some events publicly to announce Compete Louisiana in each region. We covered Truport-Bosier in Natchitoches. This week, we'll be in Lafayette and in New Orleans, working with chambers of commerce and representatives from business and industry. We'll cover the rest of the state as the fall progresses. The countless hours that this team has put in to create processes to meet the needs of these students is paying off. And if you'll download the Compete Louisiana mobile app, you will get to meet our coaches that include several vice presidents from the system that just jumped in and decided they were gonna actually be integral parts of this program. It's been, I think, invaluable to help them understand at our level just the kind of impediments and challenges that face adult students and non-traditional students. And I think it's gonna help us as we knock down those barriers moving forward. The app is state-of-the-art, and its development is ongoing, but it's empowered with an artificial intelligence-enabled bot that will help us scale up our communications with our students. Our coaches, I believe, can handle about 4,000 to 5,000 students, excuse me, 4,000 to 500 students each. Yeah, they don't like the thousand. But only with the use of technology is that gonna be available. And I'm very excited about the work. The fact that the company that has helped us with that was in town just this last week, working with Katie Baras and her team. And that is, as this program is brought to scale, it'll make a significant impact on our state and our institutions. Now, there's a brief update with some additional highlights in your folder on Compete Louisiana. Chair Romero, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. And I certainly appreciate the patience of the board and wanna move on to share some reminders. As all of you know, each year, we're required, as board members, as all state employees, to complete both ethics training and sexual harassment training courses. Due to the change of our current board meeting, our live ethics training didn't occur. Therefore, you'll be required to complete that process online. We're required to complete both ethics and sexual harassment training each year prior to the end of this calendar year. If you have any questions or need any help with this, please contact Bruce Genet. While talking about training opportunities, included in your folders is a list of dates which are offered and available through the Civil Division of the Louisiana Department of Justice in providing civil law trainings for state government boards and commissions. As you all know, we rely on excellent legal guidance from our attorneys, the Queer Clark and Adams, in a variety of areas. In addition to this, if you'd like to take part in any of these training opportunities individually, please feel free to register. Also, for those of you who are attorneys, the training can benefit you with three hours of continuing legal education credit. Ongoing, we'll proceed with evaluations for Presidents Gallo and President Crane. Board policy requires that a university president be individually evaluated on a regular basis for this annual review cycle and an in-depth evaluation of the three campus presidents occurred with the process involving a self-assessment by each president, the gathering of input from campus personnel via survey, and meetings Dr. Henderson had with key individuals on campus as well as community constituents. To discuss the first two in-depth evaluations, we will meet an executive session with Grambling State University President Regallo. After we've concluded our session with President Gallo, we will continue an executive session with Dr. John Crane, President of Southeastern Louisiana University. In October, we plan to schedule the third evaluation. The Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System may meet an executive session to discuss personnel matters under the provisions of Louisiana Revised Statute 4217. While in executive session, the board may not take any motions or votes. May I have a motion and a second to go into executive session? Move by Mr. Carter, second by Mr. Kitchen. Carol, if you would, please take the roll call vote.
Mr. James Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Jimmy Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Lola Dunho?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Sean Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Elizabeth Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Virgil Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Joe Salter?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Carol. The board will now adjourn to executive session.